Town of East Fishkill Planning Board will come to order. Ask for a roll call.
Lori G.
Jason Pereskeva.
Richard Campbell.
Craig Smith.
Ed Miyoshi.
Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have two upcoming meetings, one on August 18th and September 8th. The one on September 8th, we may move that out. So just be prepared to see a particular change around the 8th. We have one set of minutes to approve tonight from March 10th. Did everyone get an opportunity to review? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes from March 10th?
They'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I confirm if that was the meeting I wasn't able to attend? Or was I at that?
I don't have.
That was March 10th, I don't have to prove that I'm attending.
Okay. Okay. I know, I usually would abstain if I wasn't present.
Yeah, I don't call if you were traveling.
I don't believe I was present. I'm going to abstain. Do we still have a quorum?
No.
Well, four can...
Four's fine. Four's enough.
Okay. So Lori will abstain for this. Okay, so on tonight's agenda, we have a decision for Gasland Petroleum. The applicant was here last month. Both Scott and Michelle have been reached out to the DEC to get a decision from them as far as it pertains to boring underneath the creek. So it's one of the kind of ongoing condition that we would put on any type of resolution for Gasland.
So you mean we're still waiting to see if they require them or not?
They've been talking with DEC. I reached out to DEC and we're waiting for them to give us the decision about whether or not they're going to require a well and permit. Sometimes they do because I guess in the event of the bore comes up underneath the stream or wherever, they were proposing to start the boring outside of the well and buffer and come up outside of the well and buffer to avoid it completely. But typically...
Normally, they want to review the procedure because what can happen is the bentonite that they use around the boring can possibly come up, you know, depending on the pressures, and it could possibly perk up through the stream bottom. So usually they review that to check the depth of the bottom. Sometimes they want to see the soil conditions and things like that. So when we've done that work, the town, we've had to get DEC approval.
Okay. Cool.
Is this of the same scale though?
It's a much smaller creek, but we have small creeks too that we've crossed or tend to cross and has to be reviewed.
So we're looking at this as an amended site plan and with the condition of getting a conditional approval from DEC. So we have a resolution to offer tonight.
Wasn't this a lot line realignment or no?
Yes, that's included as well.
Yeah, it's on the second page.
It should be actually in the title as well. It's where I suppose it should be in the title as well.
What happens if they don't get approval to bore under the stream?
If they don't get approval to bore, they're going to have to get a permit.
Okay. Which station have a problem getting that?
I guess we'll see. If they don't get it, then they can't start.
Okay. Should I go ahead and read it?
Yeah, question Lori?
No.
Okay. So Jason to offer up the resolution.
Resolution of amended site plan approval, floodplain development permit, and wetlands disturbance permit. Name of site plan, Gasland East Fishkill. Name of applicant, Gasland Petroleum, Inc. Location, Route 82, East Fishkill. Resolution offered by Planning Board member Jason Pereskeva. Whereas the above referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board on February 28th, 2018 for site plan approval for a proposed gasoline filling station, Convenience Smart, to be located at 1071 Route 82. And whereas the Planning Board held public hearings on August 21st, 2018, and September 18th, 2018, when the hearings were closed. And whereas the Planning Board declared themselves lead agency on August 21st, 2018. And whereas the Planning Board adopted a negative declaration on October 20th, 2018. Whereas the applicant has submitted for an amended site plan approval and a lot line realignment to allow for a new surface septic disposal system in place of the approved package plant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board approves the site plan submitted by the applicant's engineers, Jason Engineering and Land Surveying Company, dated February 28th, 2018, and revised through May 29th, 2020 with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall include a note on the plan stating that if the adjacent site is developed in the future, a connection between two sites shall be constructed allowing ingress and egress to the Gasland site from the existing traffic light. Two, in the event the adjacent site is developed and within one year of full operation of the fourth leg of the existing traffic light, the applicant must come back before the Planning Board to address any resulting modification to the site ingress, egress, or overall site plan. Three, approval of the amended site plan from New York State DEC showing the proposed boring plan underwater Creek or receipt of a letter from New York State DEC stating no wetland permits are required for the proposed project. Four, approval of revised floodplain development permit. Five, approval from the New York State DOT and the Dutchess County Health Department.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to add two items.
Okay, look, can we just take a quick discussion on item three? This seems like it's going to force them to come back if the permit is required versus just allowing them to obtain the permit?
Yep, okay, so let's change the language.
I mean unless the DEC would actually cause them to change the site plan, wouldn't we just need either the proof that the DEC isn't going to require it or the permit itself?
Proof of approval of the amended site plan from DEC.
Does that make sense? I don't see why they should have to...
Oh yeah, no.
As long as the DEC is not causing them to change the plan, I don't see why they should have to...
Nope.
Okay.
So that would stop them to have to reappear?
Right, the way this is written, we're just giving them the requirement to prove that they don't need a permit. It's not allowing them to obtain the permit if DEC comes back and says you have to get one. Which would make them have to come back in front of us to say, hey, we need a permit and all we're going to do is just say, yeah, okay, you need a permit.
Scott?
Yes, I'd like to add six would be satisfying the CPL comment letter dated June 22nd, 2020.
Was there something specific in that that you're looking at?
Well, some erosion control potentially, an easement for future access to the septic. You know, redundant with the Dutchess County Health Department approval, that's a bit redundant. We've already got the floodplain permit. So we're already looking into the DEC. So I think the only two items that weren't previously mentioned is resolving some of the erosion control and the easement for access.
Both of those are in the comment letter.
Both of those are in the comment letter.
And you said it was dated June 22nd, 2020?
Yes. And then number seven would be to establish an escrow to have an environmental monitor.
Yep, good idea.
And I'm saying $2,000.
Is there a standard frequency of the site visits or monitoring for that or do we have to talk through that as well?
Usually, you know, once a week or after every heavy rainfall, you know, I don't know, whatever, quarter inch, half inch, you know, whatever that threshold rainfall amount is.
Do we want that for the whole construction or just for the boring under the creek?
It's going to be for the whole construction. Because now there's additional disturbance with the septic across the creek. Quite honestly, this is probably something we should have had to first go around.
And you're making a rainfall provision as well?
No, what I'm saying, she asked about the frequency of the inspections. And usually it's like once a week or after a certain rainfall, whether it's a half inch. I mean, there's a standard, you know.
And the $2,000 is enough to cover, as you think, for the duration?
Well, it's a replenishable, it's an escrow, so if it depletes, they'll have to replenish it.
Have we talked to the... I'm assuming the applicant wouldn't have an objection to that? Do we know, do we mention it to them?
I don't, I don't know. But I mean, they're working on and across the stream, so it's not anything that we haven't done before.
So Michelle will make sure communication goes out to them about these two. Thank you.
Good?
You didn't have any other letters that are pending, right? Okay.
All good? Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with a town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I proceed with the vote. Lori G.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Resolution passed. Bring in Stone Ridge.
Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. Amy Bomberdery with Dan Stokosa, representing Stone Ridge. Do you want me to give you a background of the whole?
Yeah, just a quick, I mean, we're familiar with the project, but just a quick overview.
So the project is actually two parcels and totals 6.67 acres. There's two lots, Lot 23, there's a proposed building, building number one, it has 27 one-bedroom units and 41 parking spaces. Lot number, well, building number two is on Lot 22, has 27 two-bedroom units and 48 parking spaces. The entire site has 100 spaces, which includes 11 visitor spaces and four ADA accessible spaces. We have a sign off from the Fire Advisory Board, the Architectural Review Board, the Dutchess County DPW for the entrance off of Palin Road, and the DOT for the entrance from Route 52. So the only outstanding items from other agencies are the Department of Health for the water and sewer connections and the utility permit from the DOT. So we're here tonight to ask if we can set a public hearing.
Okay, there was a, and thank you for the overview. There was a communication we received on the traffic. I wanted to know if you received it.
I did see that, yeah.
Okay, so there was concern about the traffic conditions weren't adequately depicted in the report?
I think one of the issues was that it's based on school traffic, so it's hard to replicate that at this point. And then the other issue was, I don't recall, actually.
Jackie, can you pass? Just so she can see the... Oh, okay, good. Did you get a copy?
We didn't. Do you have a copy down there of the traffic?
It was emailed, right?
I got the emails, I got the email.
You got the email, okay, good.
Yeah, no, I have the email.
Day were done in the fall, I think, right? The counts, the traffic counts? In the fall, during a school day.
Okay.
So for item one, it was just difficult to simulate it in your tooling that you're using?
At this point, because there's no... Because school's not in session, so we can't actually look at the way the traffic pattern's definitely going to...
But was it based on something, your prior...
The traffic counts were done during a school day morning. I didn't actually do the traffic report, so this is from JMC. So there's improvements that can be made, and the DOT has stated that they're going to change the timing of the light and the traffic pattern through the school.
Does the board have a comment memo from HVEA dated July 13th, 2020?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
So I thought that what you were talking about on 52 was would the backup from the buses trying to make the left into the school might back up into your turn lane? I thought that was the issue, one of the issues anyway.
Right, but so the DOT has, they issued a letter which...
Which they said they'll mess, they'll play with the timing of the light at John J.
The timing of the light and also they're going to, they're going to open up that entrance, right? So there's another entrance?
Make it part of that decision.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I'm very skeptical of that decision with the traffic coming in off of 52 because they just built that security booth there and this bypasses that, so we'll have to see how that plays out.
Well, I don't, that entrance wouldn't alleviate this traffic anyway, right? It would alleviate traffic coming from the other direction.
Right.
Eastbound traffic versus the west.
I guess the concern is the traffic that's coming from, that's going to be coming, going westbound, right? If you turn off a pail and make the right and that traffic, I mean, whatever they do on that...
Well, the way to alleviate that is I would say, if they open that gate, that's going to be their decision. You're going to pick up a bunch of cars coming in 400, 500 feet before they even get to the lane. The town supervisor has committed for an officer there, the SCOP, to give a bird's eye. And the timing of the arrow is going to be increased. When we sat there, two points in a row, the green light, as we looked at it, we went through the whole cycle, not one more. Because of circulation inside the traffic. So that we will have to make sure of the DOT. And that's why in the letter, that's up to them to consider the timing of the arrow and the school as far as what we need.
Do you have any idea when they're going to come to a conclusion on whether they're going to open that gate? Has that been discussed? Is there a timeline?
I guess it's up to the DOT and the school. We're not involved in that.
But I mean, in a perfect world, they make that decision so the board can act on that decision. Because otherwise, it's just hypothetical.
The whole reason for us to want that was because we had that project approved three times already, and then it became an issue again about that left turn lane. So our focus was then the left turn lane, we approved again, as you know, we saw a lot less traffic. So that was, that was the focus. And then, you know, the school and the DOT have been running out, there's nothing we can say about it.
No, but you're arguing that by opening that lane, that entrance, it allowed them to adjust the traffic light because you're diverting all that traffic before it gets there so you can extend the green in the westerly direction. But that's all an assumption, and unless a decision's made, we don't know if that's going to happen. That's what I'm hearing.
I think they already committed to changing the light.
Changing the light.
They were lost, I think.
Right.
So you're saying opening that entrance is irrelevant?
In their letter, in their approval letter, they, I think if you read it, I don't have it out in front of you, it's all about increasing the timing of the left turn lane going into the school.
Regardless of whether that gate's open?
It doesn't say...
You're saying that opening that gate's a move, it doesn't matter?
It doesn't mention that, I would think, if it was...
Because I'm hearing that dialogue, and that's why I'm asking.
Their commitment to the timing of the light, I think, is exclusive of the gate. I don't, they're not dependent on one another.
Okay, are there any other questions for Stone Ridge around the project?
Do we circulate already, Michelle?
Yeah. The, one of the issues here is that we have a number of large projects, I'm sorry to cut in, Craig, that are going to be going to public hearings probably soon. We typically do not like to schedule public hearings in the month of August because of the vacation schedule. But in addition, this year we've got the added issue with COVID and the fact that we have not yet figured out, we haven't done a public hearing yet with the social distance rules. So I think what we're contemplating right now is holding the public hearings in September, not having one in August, and holding and maybe adding some new dates, planning board meeting dates, so that we can hold the public hearings that we're going to need to have. I believe that Summit Woods is going to want to come in for their subdivision public hearing around that timeframe and also potentially looking at Hopeville Senior Living wanting to also come in for a public hearing in addition to...
We can't do more than one.
We can't, we can't do more than one of those at a time. They're, all three of those are large projects likely with a lot of public input. So we're, so that's just something that I'm throwing out there for the Planning Board to contemplate and one other reason why the September meeting may be difficult.
I would just state that, I mean, it says it.
We don't think we can have a public hearing in August. Maybe one of the ones that we know will have to be continued or something like that, just to alleviate the time constraint.
Staff discussed this, and I do agree with Michelle, where staff, I think, overall is more comfortable in holding the public hearing in September for a big project like this. And also too, a lot of times in the past, the board may not have held public hearings for larger projects because people still do go away in August.
My only point is with a larger project, it's likely that those public hearings don't start and end in one night, so I'm not sure that starting one in August precludes someone from public from having input, that's all.
Any concerns from the applicant having the public hearing in September?
If we could have it, if it's an option to have it in August, we prefer to have it in August, but if September's the soonest we can get it, then...
Because we also have potential other smaller ones that we could get those out of the way. This, I agree, this is a large, this would be one the town residents would be, you know, need to get a full briefing also.
I agree with the chairman.
I heard a rumor that the school might offer its auditorium. Could just be a rumor. I want, I do, I like getting around a lot of people.
Yeah.
Actually, are we looking at other venues for these public hearings?
No, we haven't even contemplated yet. And part of it is that we don't really know where we're going to be as far as the social distancing rules and for the public hearings, how many people can be in a room at any time and how we're going to have to work to figure out how to control who can come in at any given moment in time and how we're going to do all of that. We still haven't even...
Yeah, I mean, you're going to want to be able, if people aren't all able to be in the room at the same time, you're probably going to want to be able to broadcast.
That's part of the logistics of trying to deal with what we're going to be faced with in August and the fact that it tends to be where a lot of people go away.
Have we, has anyone, I don't mean we, East Fishkill, but has anybody tried an outdoor public hearing or that's not a...
What are the reins?
And where are you going to put, where are you going to put anything up for people to see?
I've already stated my personal opinion on it.
They just took Delaware off the list.
So I was at a Wapanda public hearing last week, and they had people waiting in the lobby, and they were broadcasting it on TV, and then they would call people in. If you wanted to speak, you could sign up and they would call you in. But that also has a problem because your lobby's only so big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you'd end up... So I think, I think the idea is that we can actually technically set the public hearing for a date, and then once we figure out which dates, we could set it tonight, figure out which date it is, and then let you guys know so that you can notice it properly for everybody. So we can contemplate this, you know, further, but that's one of the things is that we just have to figure out the logistics ourselves to figure out how we might be able to accommodate people that are coming.
Do we need guidance from the town board on what our guideline should be for, you know, for what we do in the building?
I think the town board would want to weigh in, and I think that's another reason why they should probably be pushed to September, so then there can be a proper protocol placed.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
I'm not arguing for August, I'm just saying...
Right, and I agree, I think it's a good point.
I mean, Michelle, do we, do we even know when school resumes? Like, are they...
No, I don't think we know at this point if they're even going to resume.
Yeah, I think they're waiting for the governor.
Early August, I believe.
Because you wouldn't even necessarily know if the schools are open for a separate venue, I mean, I don't know.
What would it be during a school day?
You know, I think the board is at least, we can...
The school's closed, the school's closed.
That's my fault. Okay.
So I think we're comfortable with moving forward with a public hearing, but we just have to confirm back to the applicant of, I think, at least two weeks' time or before the, so that they can do the notifications that they have to do.
Are we directing them to do their notifications if we put this on the agenda for September?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Are we directing them to do their notifications if we put this on the agenda for September? Or are we going to wait for a decision from...
Yeah, we're going to wait for a decision, and then we'll give them a call and let them know in planning today.
I know we usually make a motion for a specific date, but I'd be comfortable making a motion for the next available public hearing date and notice, right? Can't we make, just make a motion that says once a date is determined?
Sure, you can make, you can make a motion for a public hearing at a to be determined date.
At a to be determined date earliest...
But they can't notice at a determined date.
We only need to notice at a certain number of days ahead of time.
No, but they only have to notice 25 days ahead, so if we know it's not going to be till September, we've got a month before they have to officially give or take.
Yeah.
Right?
Agreed.
That's something else, Michelle, I mean, maybe we look at notice requirements in these days too, because we can do a lot more electronically, more rapidly.
So can I get a motion to set the public hearing for Stone Ridge Commons on a date to be determined after we've gotten guidance from the town board?
They'll move.
Moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A little late there, right? Now, are they first in line for a public hearing? For the next public hearing?
Well, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I'm just, because who else is here for a public hearing?
We normally do them in the order that they're heard.
In the order, okay. Good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good evening and welcome. So if you could start off with just a... So if you could start off with just a quick overview, and I think there are some items that, uh, you know, that, that, that you've already, you're prepared to address.
Yep.
And, and then we'll seek to move that, seems in line for an amended site plan, but we'll let you proceed.
Uh, good evening, my name is Marcus Andrews, I'm with Stewart Shops here before the board this evening for a site plan amendment to our existing Stewart Shops on Route 376 in the town of East Fishkill. We're proposing an addition off the back of our existing building and the replacement of the existing gas tanks with new gas tanks and removal of the existing two canopies with the replacement of one canopy. The existing canopy now has angled pumps that kind of pigeon toe into each other in the center, which makes it difficult circulation wise, driving in and out of the site. We're proposing the removal of those two canopies, the installation of one canopy with the pumps all angled, but at the same angle, just better flow in and out of the pump islands. The addition will pretty much allow for additional products to be sold to, inside the shop. We'll be proposing a full addition off the back with a small exterior freezer. The exterior freezer is only accessible from inside the building. It's not something that would be accessible from the outside. We'd be looking to keep the roof line the same, and it's a hip roof building now. We'd be looking to just over the addition, extend that hip roof to keep the same look for the building roof line. The facade of the building currently is a brick facade. We'd be looking to just brighten up the, the store. A stone veneer on the bottom, it's like a faux stone veneer on the bottom with hardy board siding along the remainder of that facade, as well as the proposed canopy. We'd be looking to do, it's a white fascia with phi-pond molding. And then a, since the last time we were at the, we were before this board, we've added a pitched roof to the top of the canopy to further blend in with the existing hip roof of the building. We have been in contact with Department of Health as far as the septic goes. There is issues today with that septic, so it's actually working out to good timing. With approval of this addition, we would need to upgrade that septic anyways. We are designing the new septic to meet this addition as well. DOH has been on board with everything. We've done perks and deep hole tests with them on site. We have a plan that's going to be, if it hasn't been submitted to them already, it will be this week, as well as the water system for inside the building. Um, quick summary, that's the gist of the plan. I know it's come up, it came up before, a few years ago when I was before this board, the entrance. We've talked to DOT about it. DOT wasn't against anything, but realized anything we do is going to affect a large area. The issue with, and honestly, it's, it's both entrances. The eastern entrance is the one that seems to have come up in the past. Right now, the white line here, from the white line down to say this catch basin that exists, I'm at nine and a half percent. The shoulder is the major issue. My concern is if I raise this up, I need to come back to accept any stormwater running along this earth that gets to this catch basin. Soon as I raise this up, it blocks it here. I'm looking, I would need to pretty much remove all this, actually redo the shoulder.
And all that water actually runs to the west, on the west side of.
All this water right here puddles right here now because it's so flat.
But, but it actually pitches west.
And so this, this also pitches west.
So that really dictates.
Block on this side.
The east side really dictates how much you can raise that basin on the west side.
But again, if, if I raise anything, it's going to block this now coming across.
That's what I'm saying, the east side of the entrance dictates how much you can raise the west side.
Correct. Correct.
But I think you got a little room there based on some.
The, the issue though, the issue, I guess, my question is what is the issue?
Well, just to try to soften that kind of abrupt dip right there.
Because.
And I, and I went out there with a smart love, I think you can probably raise it maybe about three inches, which is, I mean, it is what it is, you can raise it what you can raise it without creating another problem.
And, and that's, that's my biggest issue is we get into, at three inches, how much are we coming out here, how much are we coming out here to limit ponding? If I raise this three inches, I've got to come back here.
We didn't have good spot elevations in our plan, so I don't know if that plan you have there.
This plan was submitted in the last, last set.
Okay.
This sheet right here was submitted. These are all existing spot grades.
You have top of curb, bottom of curb in spots?
Uh, they're all bottom of curb.
I'm sorry.
It's, they're all bottom of curb, it's all pavement grades, yes.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. The existing canopy does have LED recessed LED lighting in it. We'd just be replacing, I believe there are two, or there's eight now, we're replacing them with six, two over each island. There are additional, a few additional socket lights that would go on the addition just to light up the delivery area and the dumpster area for our partners. Um, I guess in a nutshell, that pretty much summarizes what we're looking to do.
And you're providing additional, but where are the ballards going to be?
The ballards, dumpster, I guess. The ballards were going to actually put in front of every parking spot. This area over here, we're tearing up, we'd be tearing up a lot anyways, conduit wise. The front of this, or this side of the building will, will house a exterior electric panel, which is enclosed, and it will have siding to match the existing building. We'll put ballards in front of that. We thought, you know, if we're putting ballards in front of that, we'll just tear the ballards. Keeps people, protects the building, keeps people from jumping the curb.
But are you putting them in front of the curb or behind the curb?
We're proposing to put them in front of the curb. I know there was a comment about putting them in the sidewalk.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm personally opposed to putting them in front of the curb. We typically don't see that in front of the curb, so.
Um, we, we'd also be looking to proba, more than likely, what we do here is just pave flush. We pave flush, so there is no curb. We'll be replacing those sidewalks, so yes, putting them in the sidewalk is not an issue.
But it's not going to be a reveal on that.
There will not be a reveal at all. Gets rid of any trip hazard, gets rid of any issue. Later on down the road, we've seen a lot of, if we repaved the lot five years down the road, you add an inch and a half, you add an inch and a half here, all of a sudden you're at a three inch sidewalk, which doesn't, it just is a trip hazard.
So if you paint it flush, then you got to mill the part.
Then you mill, you mill it out, yes.
And what about drainage?
Drainage is going to stay, you know, obviously, you know, if something happens with the entrance, it changes the drainage. Other than that, it stays pretty much the same. Everything drains to existing structures out of the DOT right of way.
But by means of putting the addition on, you're not eliminating any drainage at the back of the building?
Eliminating, technically, no, it's pavement now. So it would be collected by roof gutters into the existing structures that run.
Did we look at parking for this?
I looked at the parking, they have sufficient.
But you, so with the addition of the freezer, do you have more retail space or is it just more storage?
There will be, I, I would, I would believe there would be more retail space. Storage, cooler, freezer get shifted back to add more retail space to the shop, yes.
Okay.
Can you give me a little, a bit of information about the lighting levels you're expecting underneath the canopy?
Today, you're looking at an average of, uh, it's like about fifteen and a half under the canopy. We, what we're proposing, sorry, this is a little bit of a small one. Uh, proposing average seventeen and a half under the canopy. This plan was also, I believe, submitted in, in your package, yes.
We've been looking at canopy lighting and requesting that the canopy lighting be reduced so that it's not as bright as seventeen and a half. In one of the locations, we have, I think it's an average of eight foot candles, I believe, is what we, we have.
Outside the canopy or directly under it?
Directly under it, yeah. I believe that ATM safety law is about five foot candles, so it's even above that. It gets, it gets pretty bright when you're standing, you know, outside of the range of the light looking in, you get a lot of glare and it's, it's pretty bright for any, for any neighboring uses.
We'll definitely look at that, it's.
I know that it's sometimes difficult with the way the lights are placed, but if you could look to.
I, I understand the brightness, we also like the brightness for security reasons. It's, it is gas dispensing, so it needs to be monitored by a partner from inside the shop at all times. So that's where it gets, you know, yes, seventeen and a half maybe too much. We'll look to see how low we can go, we'll try to get as close as we can to eight, that's no problem.
Does Greenway recommend a level for the canopy?
Yeah, there's, there are a bunch of, you know, organizations and industry standards for lower lighting levels in gas stations. And we looked at this one and I just don't remember which gas station it was. Do you remember which one it was, it was over in, I believe. I was out there with Brian Stokosa, it was a zoning board application and they had some complaints about the lighting levels and we went out and measured and it was one of the, it was actually one of the Flores gas stations. And we reduced the lighting levels there to about, about eight.
You remember what they were?
At least at, in the evenings, you know, later in the evenings. They had a lot of presidents somewhere around there and we're looking at it.
You remember what they were at?
What they were originally at?
Yeah.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I probably have it in my notes somewhere, I can tell you.
Okay, um, any other questions from board members? Scott, any additional, any other concerns?
No.
Run this. Okay, so I, I think this is a, this is a minor site plan. Change, does.
How does it fit under minor?
Oh, I meant a sig, amended site plan. So on this one, Michelle, we're.
They're going to come back with.
They're going to come back on this?
Yeah, they're going to come back and give us information about the stuff that we discussed.
Okay, sorry about that.
And I know that you still have an outstanding issue. You, you are requesting to modify the size of your sign to what is more than, what is, what is allowed currently?
We did lower that.
You changed it to.
We changed it to match what is, no, we're actually a little bit bigger, thirty six square feet is what we're proposing.
So you would like to give me a call tomorrow. I'll tell you up in front of the sign review board.
Okay.
And then they'll discuss that.
Yep.
And have you been to the ARB as well?
They've been to the ARB and the ARB made some changes to, they had, they actually asked, I believe that the, the change in the roof line of the canopy was in response to one of the ARB comments and also they extended the siding and the faux stone, I believe, on one side of the building in that area as a result of the ARB comments.
Okay.
What's the height of the current sign?
Height of the current sign, I believe, would be, I'm going to, I don't know, I'm going to say fifteen feet to the top. That's, that's a typical height that we've installed.
So you're going to double the height? Is that what you said?
No, 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 that's the height. The size of that sign is thirteen.
Area, yeah.
Thank you for putting it thirty two feet.
That sign. The only reason we're doing anything with the sign is because of the DOT taking. That sign now sits partially in the right of way. So the sign has to come out, to move it back in that current location, it becomes blocked by the neighbor to the west.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So we're, we're proposing to move it to the east side of the property. It currently sits here, we're proposing to move it to the east side of the property.
So I guess the question then is if you guys want to, if you feel like he's ready to be scheduled for a public hearing or you want to wait till he provides the additional information before you schedule for a public hearing?
The additional information is for.
Would just be the lighting, the sign that still has to be handled and.
You can do that, you can do that in conjunction though, right, in reality?
The lighting.
I don't see anything.
Even our drainage issue, however it resolves itself, I don't think impacts the public.
No.
And there was already a public hearing before the ZBA and nobody signed on to Zoom to comment, so I think this one could safely be scheduled for August.
Schedule for a public hearing for August?
I think you could do it on this one.
Board members comfortable with a public hearing for?
I would agree that the number of people you would expect to come to this public hearing would be less than the one for the apartment.
Especially where it's located, so. So can I get a motion to set the public hearing for, for Stewart Shops for August? August eighteenth?
It's all moved.
Second.
This is moved improperly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
One of those restaurants with the doors that go.
Hi.
Long, long time no see, huh?
I know. Amy Bomberdery representing I Park for Dan Stokosa.
Amy, would you like me to bring up the drainage site plan or which one do you want to talk to?
Do you, uh.
I have them all, I think.
How about sheet three? That's just the regular.
That come with the drainage or that thing before the drainage?
I think it's.
Under one, you just submitted?
About that one, sure.
Okay. Let's see this out this time.
You think so?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. You want to, you want to go first?
Please.
Okay.
Can we, are we allowed to take the mask off by, by speaking, Chairman?
Yes, so we can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise it's muffled, but anyway. Uh, hi, I'm Joe Cotter with I Park eighty-four. And it was great to hear that you guys were doing in-person meetings as opposed to Zoom because it's often very difficult to get ones, you know, communicate as clearly as we'd like. I know we have some technical issues to go over, but I just wanted to give the board and since you guys have come here, a little bit of background about how this whole visitor and education center came, came up and what's the whole genesis of it. Because, you know, when we first came to Fishkill, the previous supervisor, John Hickman, said to us before, you really decide to come here, you should really learn what East Fishkill is all about. And he said, you know, our history and the farming roots and things like that are very important to us. And that was four years ago, we had a false start, we didn't acquire the property for two years. And, um, that was four years ago. We had a false start. We didn't acquire the property, uh, for two years after that. So we spent a lot of time and we did a lot of research. So, um, what we're trying to do with this, and it doesn't actually have any real tenants, just so the board understands, it's, it's actually a, uh, more or less an amenity. So that, you know, we're not renting the visitor center to anyone. In fact, what the other impetus for it is Ronnie Brook the Dairy, which is a big Hudson Valley brand. Rick and Ron, that's the name for Ronnie Brook. But they basically, um, have been working with Cornell and, and they saw a, a visitor center like this in Wisconsin. Much grander. It's about twenty thousand square feet. And, uh, they've been working, you know, with trying to get together a lot of the farmers in the Hudson Valley and to try to sort of pay homage to the history of the Hudson Valley and the whole farming, uh, background. And we felt and, and, and Rick feels that this should be sort of the gateway to the Hudson Valley with the whole food, uh, trends towards food and that. So we hope to, and this, the building's quite small, as you know, and, um, but we hope to have, um, a lecture area and we hope to film a test kitchen and stuff. We hope to do like streaming and stuff like that. So it's, it's kind of meant as a, we hope it will be as much of a public amenity as will be anything else. And I, and, um, that's kind of important to us. We have reached out to, uh, Cobal Skill as well, SUNY Cobal Skill, to try to get some connections there. We're hoping to get some, actually some state funding to do a little bit of the educational, you know, talk a little bit about the history of the Hudson Valley farmers, things like that. So we've put a lot of time in this over years, even before we bought the thing and, uh, the property. Sorry to say the thing, but to, but, you know, it's been something that we've been focused on for a long time. So I thought the board should just understand, you know, that this was a long time coming and we've, we've tried to look at it. The Culinary Institute, we met with their president. We had, he was kind enough to have lunch and he was supposed to do a tour sometime in April, but as we know, the world changed with COVID. But they, the, the Culinary Institute's very, um, focused on doing their own thing. You know, they don't really wanna, you know, they're very proprietary. So it's not as if we could get a satellite that easily or anything like that. But what they did say is that they, a lot of their students do end up manufacturing food. And they don't really have the space and, you know, they're, they told us when we were there, what if they're gonna, they were planning a hotel, you know, on their site, which we hadn't known they were gonna do. And they brought in a developer and they asked us a lot of questions. So we told them, you know, we're not looking to in any way trade off your name and all, but we would like your students, uh, cause a lot of them have started a lot of these, uh, food companies and things like that, not just restaurants. We'd like them to come and see what kind of spaces we have. So I think that's kind of important. So one of the other things, so they were very interested. They liked the idea of it. We're still trying to court them. What we, what we're trying to do is also offer them a, um, in, in addition to our visitor center in the existing building, uh, which we have now a bakery, Sprout Creek, which is gonna bake goods, and we have Ronnie Brook with a very small, they're gonna make ice cream there. The other thing I told John, John Hickman, uh, is that, you know, everybody likes ice cream. And we, when we had Ronnie Brook, I think there'd be nothing nicer to have a place. I mean, I've always been fascinated. I hate to say it, even at my age, I still, uh, I'm a little bit obsessed with ice cream. So, um, to have Ronnie Brook actually make ice cream behind a glass door and, and to have a, uh, we're trying to do a replica soda fountain, you know, I think it's gonna be a great thing for the whole community. It'd be a great place to go and we only recently were able to get sort of the ability to do that. So that's gonna be there. Sprout Creek will have a bakery. We, we hope to have a couple of little, um, kiosk type thing in there and we're gonna offer one if we can get the Culinary Institute for an entrepreneur, you know, where people, you know, at no cost, like they can try their startup. Let's say somebody's coming up with the next new taco or chipwich or whatever the new food thing. So we're, we're trying to do that and, and we have a couple of, um, and getting back. So, so, you know, I Park eighty-four, as we call it, you know, we, we certainly have a heavy lift. It's not been, it's not been easy. I mean, the buildings are, you know, they're like dead bodies. So giving them life is sort of, uh, you know, like giving, it's raising them from the dead. But we, we've made some progress and one of the things that has, um, captured, uh, that's gotten some traction is the food manufacturing. So, um, you know, there's still the tech and, and by the way, just so we're clear, we're, we're very supportive of global and now on because we think that, you know, there's still, their jobs and their technology is still very important and, and we're, but, but they also need some amenities. For better or worse, you know, over the years, IBM, you know, there's been nothing spent on any of the amenities. So, um, as Scott knows all too well, after a false start, we're trying to get Health Club in there, Powerhouse Gym, which your board knows, which is gonna be kind of in the center of this food hub, which will be, you know, we're trying to make this the public space, so we hope that we'll have traffic. We also have a, a cookie manufacturer there, Jane Bakes, who, um, she's quite a character and she has a brand of healthy cookies, uh, in a small cafe there. We all, and we have Sprout Creek. We have, you know, what everyone probably knows Sloop, which maybe in the future where they're putting their outdoor tents there, we're trying to encourage them to do a, a visitor center. And there's some inspiration from a, a building called The Long House, which was kind of an old Iroquois Indian, sort of very long and thin, which might be interesting with like a porch. So we're trying to create character in a very faceless, faceless situation. So I just want the board to know that, that, um, that's important. And we, we, um, the other thing that's, that to tell you is, you know, COVID has frozen everything and, and the companies, a lot of them do feed the restaurant industry and support them. So a lot of, a lot of these businesses haven't done as well. Some of them have actually flourished, like Creppini, the company that makes crepes. They're actually looking to expand, so they've done very well. They have a cauliflower-based crepe that's, um, gluten-free and, and healthy and things like that. It only has egg whites. They've exploded and they're looking to expand. There's someone who does, um, smoked salmon, country produce. He's, he's growing quite meaningfully. But someone like Cazzini, who sharpens knives for the restaurant industry, they're totally dead because restaurants are, are dead. So we're, we're in kind of challenging times. Our hope though, is that one of the trends that we think is really going to, uh, we're taking a chance on it and that's why I wanted to come tonight and just speak to the board, is to do this food hub and to do this visitor center, like I said, without, you know, in these times is kind of a risk and we, we spoke about it internally quite a long time. But we're, with COVID, we're seeing and we're hoping that this trend of people wanting to leave the city and maybe come, you know, further out and, and food has exploded. I mean, I don't know about you, but I've never cooked so many meals in my house ever. I actually ran a restaurant when I was nineteen and outside of Boston, I made, it was an ice cream restaurant called The Just Dessert. So I've been following ice cream my whole life, so that's why I'm a fan of Ronnie Brook. But, um, you know, the food businesses are, are really getting traction. And, and we think if we can become and get ahead of it, be like a first mover advantage, become like that focal point in the Hudson Valley, that a lot of these businesses will come. And we're, and we're starting to generate, we're almost getting that kind of traction. COVID obviously was a shock, you know, to everyone, so, so we're not complaining. But we think if we could get this whole visitor center and, and our food hub going, when everyone wakes up, whether it's September, January or March, and we don't pretend to know it, we think it, it will be great because when we, we do the leasing, you know, we bring people in. You get there and it's hard to, to, um, to figure out. It's a huge complex and, you know, frankly, quite sterile. So we're trying to add a little life, get off, you know, it's a straight ahead, you know, welcome to the food hub. So we're trying to get some big signage, you know, the, the visitor experience. We wanna get some big signage right off exit or gate five. And we wanna get them to this food hub and when people walk in. But what it does though, is when you're trying to, to attract a manufacturer, you're saying, look, this is kind of, there's a, a whole ecosystem of food companies and they can maybe share ideas. There's marketing. We're hoping to have this streaming area cause Sloop's already interested in streaming Sprout Creek. They have some really creative food people. They're looking to do a weekly stream. This Jane Bakes wants to do, uh, teaching courses and, and, you know, so we think if we, you know, it's gonna take a while, but we just really are trying our best to get this thing going. So, so I, I just wanted to give the board, because we haven't really had an opportunity. When you're on Zoom, it's impossible to talk like this. So I just wanted to give the board a little bit of background, um, you know. And the other thing to say is, you know, the, the retail components and all in restaurants, it's gonna be slow. So the whole, we think the manufacturing may be, uh, an area that, that could get traction because it looks like a lot of companies do wanna leave the city. You know, the fun things of being in Brooklyn and, you know, they're in, you know, these urban areas. You know, I think it will come back, but, you know, whether it does or it doesn't. But I know there's a lot of impetus and people do want the, you know, the fresh air, the cleaner pasture, so to speak. So we think if we can create a kind of, this kind of a, an ambiance up here. So that's kind of just the background and, and obviously, um, you know, we're, we have some other plans and things like that, which we'll certainly share with you over time. And, but we've spent a lot of time, you know, uh, the supervisor and, and the, the planning team, we try to update them, you know, on, on some of our tenants. We, we, they've been actually very supportive of us and frankly, if we didn't have such good feeling, we, you know, we wouldn't probably be as committed to this project. We have a number, our company has a number of projects, but we just want you to know that, that things, you know, we're trying to do our best to make it work. One thing just to share as well, what is happening is because of COVID, we have been working with a number of, uh, PPE firms. Uh, we have a mask company, uh, and there's another company that is looking for, um, to possibly manufacture gloves. We've been, the statesmen very, uh, in touch with us just to, to share like what's going on. And, uh, they're looking for places to, to do even more of the PPE manufacturing, you know, New York-made, things like that. So I just wanna tell the board, you know, the food hub is kind of a pet, but the, the rest of the buildings and the complex and even Global Foundries, in order to keep those kind of companies happy and compete in this environment with other parts of the country that may have different, you know, lifestyle advantages, weather and things like that, having amenities, um, for these companies, even global who, they're not our tenant. We have some of their space, but I'm saying it's really important. So it's our, you know, the, the, the food hub and this visitor center, it's really meant to be sort of, you know, our globe, our vision, if you will, is to create like some fun opportunities for all the, the, um, the employees while they're at I Park and then also try to engage the community to give them a little more, uh, connection. And I think the site is really a blank canvas. So, you know, our, our goal is to add some life and it's not that easy, to be honest. But we like the challenge, but we just wanted to share with you because we didn't want the board not to, we wanted to make sure that you kind of heard what, you know, what, what's behind this. So, cause sometimes in isolation, it's, it, you don't get the same level of detail. So anyway, that.
And thank you, thank you for that. I mean, that was a, a, a great overview and it gives us a, a bigger appreciation of, of what's, what's to come.
That's hard to do on Zoom.
Yeah.
They called me today and this is last minute and they said, well, you know, the meeting's in person. I said, in person, really? So, um, I figured, you know, make the time and, uh, and that you guys could come out. And it's, it's much more fun to present live these days.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So the current proposal is a proposed visitor center at the southeast corner of the existing structure, right there. There's a proposed addition at the south corner and a cafe addition at the north corner, which is Jane Bakes. This actually decreases the impervious by three thousand two hundred square feet. Uh, we're connecting the roof leaders into existing drainage structures. There's a few structures that have conflicts with buildings, so they'll either be relocated or the building footprint will be adjusted. One of them has at least four pipes connected to it, so you probably wanna change the building footprint around that one. The parking decreases by nine spaces in this area, but we've added eight ADA spaces.
How many ADA spaces?
There's eight total and there's eight proposed and that's it. There's nothing designated there right now as ADA. And is that next to both the visitor center and, uh, the cafe? Yeah, it's right in the middle there. So they're, okay. And those are upgrade entrances for the visitor center. So it's just a matter of grading out the sidewalk. And the cafe as well?
So.
That's access from outside, right? It's not access from inside the building? Cafe? Yes.
So maybe you can walk in either this way here or you can come in up through here?
Correct.
And this, this addition here is meant to provide an entrance to whatever rents this space out here, correct?
Correct. More of an employee entrance or a customer entrance? Well, that's not gonna be an ADA entrance.
This is for a, a food manufacturer, right? If there's a food manufacturer in that space.
If you don't mind, I'll jump in on some of these questions just because. By the way, the, the eight ADA spots, I'm not sure we think that's optimal. We think we probably should put some back in front of the visitor center because that may be where we do get the need as well as the others. So we've been looking at possibly, you know, adjusting those. The, the area on the end, we, we're in discussions with, uh, both Sloop and another brewery. And that was meant to be a potential like visitor center. So that is not, that's meant to be for potentially a public, uh, that little piece. But, uh, but inside, just to tell you, I'll just do it by hand.
Yeah, Joe, just come back to, just stay near the mic. We'll, we'll figure it out.
But I was gonna say, right in the middle, that building is approximately, um, thirty thousand square feet. So if you take the middle twenty thousand with leaving about six, five and six on each side, that's where the bakery is going. Okay, so, so.
Here?
Yeah. So on one side, we have a tenant that we don't have yet. That's why we left the provision for that. And on the other side is what we're calling the actual food hall, where you walk through the visitor center. It's basically like a new, an entrance way. And the visitor center, if you cut it right, bisected it right in the middle like that, to the left will be the museum piece you'll walk in. And to the right, we were in touch with Taste of New York as well. There'll be a slot, a small retail. Then there'll be a classroom area and then that test kitchen will be right before you enter the main building. On the left, we're looking at more of a museum experience, a curved wall, a couple of films. And we're looking at, you know, we're engaging, like I said, with one of the universities in Ronnie Brook on some of the history. So we're, our ideal is, there was one that we saw up in Vermont where you have maybe anywhere from ten to thirty family farms or food businesses that have been in the Hudson Valley for many years, you know. So we'll do a family history. There can be a video. Uh, and then hopefully some of our manufacturers as well will have an opportunity on, on the sort of retail side. Will have their logos up. They can have some of their story. And then in the Taste of New York, we're gonna offer the manufacturer's ability to sell to the public. You know, like, let's say they want, like smoked salmon. We have a guy who's gonna be making tortillas. We, he'll be selling his chips. We'll have, you know, ideally you'll have maybe twenty or thirty retail things that are made, you know, at I Park. So that's kind of the, um, that's kind of what we hope to do there. So the, we kind of have two, maybe two thirds or eighty percent of it already leased. The bakery's taking quite a bit of it. They're gonna have a very small retail operation that opens into the, the food hall, if you will. So, uh, which we made them, you know, we required them to do it. They didn't necessarily wanna do it. But we thought, you know, nothing's better. We'll have ice cream. We'll have a bakery. They'll sell, they sell apparently really good crumb cake and, and bread, so.
You're putting the apartments right above it for those of us who just.
Well, we, we, we wanted to. COVID's kind of, you know, my partner who isn't here and she apologizes, but, you know, it's not easy to, to keep the ball rolling in these times, you know, cause the, the food, the restaurant stuff's definitely kind of, you know, scary. But we think getting this visitor center going now may give us sort of a shot in the arm to get through and, and attract other people. But sorry to interrupt. I just wanna make sure that.
Thank you.
I think if that's gonna be, it sounds like it'll be hopefully a public entrance. I would also add a couple ADA spaces down at the, the other small addition. On the south corner? Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't remember. Was, was the silo usable space or is that?
Was the silo usable space or is that decorative?
That was decorative.
Decorative.
That was decorative. The silo, at least our goal is, you'd walk in to the doors. There'll be a curved, kind of go one of two ways museum. And the silo will be in the museum piece. And we're still trying to get, but Ron from Ronnie Brook, uh, actually, his name is Rick. Ron is his older brother. Um, Rick has some, he wants to do the Ronnie Brook story in the silo, so.
Okay.
We're doing it kind of as a homage to the, to the farmers, so, um, we'll see how it goes. But we hope that, that it's part of the museum. So when you go in, be in the museum, and we're trying to figure out something cool to do there, so.
So it's fairly minor in nature, since we're actually decreasing the impervious. And this area is obviously then subject to much higher traffic and.
So, um, Michelle, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask this again. Did we do the traffic count or traffic, the parking counts?
We did, we did a traffic, a parking count. I believe, just can't remember off the top of my head, there's 200 and some odd spaces. And you, and, um, they used, they used a different parking count for each of the different uses in there. So they actually allotted for manufacturing spaces, for retail spaces, for the cafe.
Okay.
Their, um, potential uses. They don't know exactly 100% what they use.
I know there's a lot of space at this site, but I guess I would just say again, I feel like if this becomes what we think it's gonna become, I hope you have space for buses and things like that, because I think it would be really cool.
We should all be so lucky, but, but we do have, you know, a lot of parking. We have been hoping that it does, uh, you know, in, in an expanded plan of this, when we were a little more, um, aggressive, we, we did have some outbuildings, and we did look at how we would put more parking, connect the parking to the, uh, west.
Yeah, I was just trying to think through like a drop-off zone or something like that. I'm not sure you need it, but just if you did have.
See, see where the terrain, where the topo goes? That's, um, like a rock out probably. But if we, if we do sort of try to expand, we think we can create a pedestrian in front of that on the main road. And that would connect to some of our bigger parking lots, particularly weekends, because hopefully it will be complimentary. I mean, we, we don't expect it to happen during office hours. But, you know, let's say in fall, if we have, you know, hopefully, um, you know, uh, if it, let's say in a couple of years, if it starts to catch on and we get, start getting more, that it would be great to get buses and things like that. But we would certainly talk about traffic flows and that. At the moment, you know, we're nervous that we may go there, no one comes, you know. We're still in that period where, you know, we're not quite sure.
I believe South Drive is wide enough to have a bus pull off and then they could park elsewhere on the property.
Yeah, I was just thinking about a drop-off zone, because you, the bus would probably park further away.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's wide enough.
Especially if it's like kids or something.
And it's actually pretty flat on the south side, so if that needed to be expanded, I don't think that would be.
Okay.
And I know we sort of discussed lighting, but, um, did you have a chance to go out there and take a look at?
So I went out there and only half of the parking lot was lit, so. And then I talked to Mike, and, uh, you, they have fixtures that they're going to use on the existing poles. So a few poles are being eliminated. I, I modeled it based on the fixtures they're gonna replace it with and added a few wall packs to egress points. And there's a lighting plan.
So if, if, in the event that a bus is, there is bus parking here, you, people would be able to see from this side of the parking lot to those that are sent out?
I don't know that I ran it that far out, but I, I mean, it's definitely doable.
What kind of lighting you're gonna have on the building?
It's downcast LED, wall packs, dark sky.
The idea of the hours, this might be open, any idea?
At the moment, we're just planning on weekends, you know, maybe, you know, we'll, we'll try to, um, we'll try to coordinate with, you know, eventually, hopefully with school groups, you know, we could see maybe during the week, maybe we could get, you know, schools to come and do tours. It just really depends on how interesting we can make it, whether the museum, you know, is, it's hard to get kids' attention, but I think.
We had them at ice cream.
We get the ice cream.
Yeah.
We get the ice cream, we get the bakery.
Yes.
We get the Taste of New York. Uh, and we also think the streaming's pretty fun. You know, the, the other thing we're hoping is if we, is like the, the test kitchen, maybe, uh, we did, Culinary Institute and Cobleskill both said they would send, uh, the odd guest lecturer or something. And we have some of our, uh, business owners willing to do, uh, you know, teach a course or, you know, how do you make, you know, uh, bread or, you know, things like that. Crepini had some ideas. So we think if we could, you know, our goal would be over time is to create it like as a food mecca. And, and, uh, you know, the other interesting thing is that if we get it right, a lot of the wholesalers, the ShopRites, the Walmarts, the, um, Costcos, because Crepini sells to, uh, Trader Joe's, Walmart, Publix, all these different things, they can all come and visit different manufacturers at the same time. So the buyers of, because they all have to do site inspections. So, uh, for instance, we know that, um, Whole Foods now not only does Crepini, but, uh, Sloop got picked up by Whole Foods. So the whole idea is if you can make it an interesting place and add a little more technology and connection to it, we think it could, you know, will take some time, but we think it could be like, uh, end up being a fun place. So over time, maybe exactly that, we could get school groups, you know, during the day. But at the moment, we think just weekends, and, and that probably won't be for a while. We were hoping to get it open for fall, like Columbus Day, because we, we think we could build the building relatively quickly. You know, we've been a little slower than we hoped. But, um, you know, when the, that outdoor porch is something that we're looking forward to, because the building really is, it's pretty sterile, you know. So we're trying to figure out how to, how to soften it up. We're trying to give it more of a, a barn, a reclaimed lumber, things like that, just to give it more of a homey, warmer feel.
So they have been working with the Architectural Review Board and taking their suggestions. And so I, at this, we're gonna ask that.
Has the, did the ARB make any significant changes to?
They made suggestions on the materials on the exterior. I don't know that anything's been set in stone yet.
Okay.
The only question, the only one that we were, we're trying to get back to, and they were concerned that the use of wood may, the longevity of it, you know, even though we were trying to. So we've made the case for more like reclaimed wood or wood that's already been, been seasoned. You know, there are a lot of other products, products that we've looked at, including, believe it or not, aluminum siding that looks like wood. But, you know, it's ironic that we're, you know, we're coming full circle. Um, but we are doing standing seam roofs only because the rain is intense. And, you know, we, we definitely want to protect ourselves. Uh, but, but it does fit with the character of some of the barns and things. And, and we have studied a lot of barns. The other thing we wanted to, to suggest in that, you just, it reminded me is with, when we talked about this some four or five years ago, we wanted to get the East Fish Gill Historical Society involved too, uh, to give them some space in the museum to sort of talk about, you know, very, you know, hyperlocal, what's, what's the history of East Fish Gill, some of the old farms. You know, we could even do how this or I Park 84 was originally a farm. You know, and how, you know, Watson came up in the early 50s and said, you know, he's gonna. So we think that that kind of history, uh, on a lot of our properties, we've done kind of museums. We took over a, a site in Long Island that was the home of, uh, the UN. It was in Lake Success, it was Barry Rand, where they made bombs for the war, and then became the home of the UN for a while. So we did this big museum, and, and it's very well received, you know, particularly like there's so many IBM alumni that at, at PerkinElmer, one of the facilities we have, we used to have a, about a 2,000-person alumni, PerkinElmer alumni meeting every couple of years. They'd all have practice or something, and it's, and they'd all get a chance. So I think, you know, in a way, even though IBM, you know, but this particular location was home to a lot of people who worked here. Uh, so, you know, you never know. Everyone loves, you know, the history and just learning how it came about, so.
So what, what is this, one of the critical things that you need to, to get done? Yeah.
So we're, I'd like to ask that we, we have the public hearing, because it is such a minor action, just for the suction, for what's proposed now. So otherwise, we need a public hearing, they need architectural review approval. I don't think access is an issue or concern, uh, water.
Let me just, let me just ask you, uh, have we got the foundation plans yet or no?
He's almost ready with this guy.
So, I mean, they don't have the foundation plan ready. We haven't reviewed the foundation plan. But maybe, maybe you need that for building permit, regardless of what action the planning board takes. You can't break ground out of it. So, you know, maybe what we could consider is, I think maybe having a public hearing, but I don't know that we can authorize the, a foundation-only permit at this stage at their own risk, provided they submit those plans, we review those plans, and, and issue that foundation-only permit. That, I think that keeps you moving, but it also gives the public a chance to just, you know, be informed and weigh in.
Is there demolition work that needs to be?
Not, not that much. I mean, to be honest, Scott, and, and Will, you know, we obviously, we hope to be in front of this board for a lot of things. I mean, if there was ever a case to, to let something get going, we think this is it. And I appreciate you saying about the, the foundation permit, and I think we'll have it imminently. But we would very much like to get this thing going, because we, we really want to get ahead of this and not, you know, in these times, we just wouldn't want to be, be, uh, we'd like to take advantage of the weather. I think we can have this thing open by year end.
But if you just do a timeline, we don't have the plans yet.
Right.
So we turn around, that's assuming there's no comments. You gotta break ground, you gotta port a foundation, and that already brings you to our next meeting. And I'll see, you know, possibly we could have a resolution ready at that next meeting. Close the public open, close it, and.
So to answer your question, the, the demolition that's gonna take place is saw cutting, and there's gonna be a removal of a few light pole bases, and.
It's all minor.
Yeah, it's minor.
Is that two weeks worth of work, three weeks?
Demo now, probably a week, I'd say. I mean, depending on how they go about it. If they do everything all at once, then there could be a week of demo. But for, even for the visitor center, I'd say that demo could be done in a matter of days.
We'll, we'll obviously abide by the board, right? We're not, but there's so little work going on and it's such a quiet time, it would be kind of a cool thing for us to get going. And since we have a lot of capacity at the moment, so, you know, we have a lot of workers, we'd love to get everything going and do it. But, you know, to Scott's point, we could kind of do it that way. Because it's as much of amenity for the public.
It's the next step after the foundation.
Uh, well, steel, wood, frame. But we're thinking of doing, we, we.
Steel?
Yeah, like heavy gauge, heavy gauge studs we're trying to do, so we don't have to.
Maybe if, to address your concern, we do a foundation and just steel erection only at your own risk. If, just so you don't get, I don't think you're gonna get jammed up with just the foundation only, but just in case you go out there and really bang the heck out of it.
If it's the board's, if it's the board's, uh, you know, request that we do a public hearing, you know, we're, we're gonna be in here for the long term. So the last thing we want to do is, you know, not work collectively with you. But, you know, that would be great. I mean, you know, we could probably do it. I mean, you know, we also have, we also.
Something that you're breeding in people in, you know, from the outside, you know.
No, no, Scott, it's.
It's not like you're just outfitting an existing industrial space into another industrial space. It's a, it's a different, you know.
But, you know, we have a bank and all that, they, everybody wants to see, you know, we can risk a few things. But, look, like I said, we just wanted the board to really understand what it is. It's gonna be great for everyone if, if it catches on. If it doesn't, you know, we'll have at least a, a nice, uh, a nice, what do we call it? A vestibule to our building. Uh, but anyway, we'll, we'll abide by the board's wishes, so that's, you know. And, and we appreciate, Scott, if, if we end up with doing the public hearing, you know, we'd be very grateful to, to get, you know, the steel, you know, the structure as well, so, you know, but I'm not sure how.
Those plans you haven't submitted yet. You're just trying to get the foundation in. Is the steel drawing coming in with the foundation or no?
It's not coming with the foundation, it's gonna be about a week behind, Scott.
So, I mean, in all reality, you're not gonna be held up.
No, I, it's like anything else, you know, you just, if you can get one thing checked off the list with a, in the world of a million problems.
If you can, if you can take a mile instead of an inch, you take it, yeah.
No, well, not a mile, but, but, but if it was a big project, I mean, it's, it's, but like I said, we're here in peace. Have enough, we have enough challenges in our lives, so, you know, we'll abide by the board. But we appreciate that, that courtesy, because it would, it would help us if we weren't able to get the, you know.
Scott, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Laura.
I was just, Scott, it sounds like you would be comfortable at the applicant's risk, allowing them to move forward with a foundation and possibly the steel erection, assuming that you received all the proper plans that you would expect.
Yes, yes. They, they still have to get a building permit. But they can only get that permit if the planning board consents to the issuance of some limited scope of work prior to a formal approval.
I, I think we would want the applicant to just acknowledge again that it would be completely your risk, knowing that you haven't been to public hearing yet. I mean, it's a new building.
No, that's, uh, you know, I have a partner who's, uh, I like everything, she dislikes everything. So.
That's perfect.
We're a good balance, the importance of third year, but, but, um.
But honestly, I don't think we anticipate a project that one forward. It's just a matter of having some public input. I don't think anyone anticipates this thing's not gonna move forward.
Right.
Yeah. What happens if it doesn't move forward?
What's that?
What happens if it doesn't?
Why shouldn't it? Why, I mean.
I don't know. I mean, we, we got COVID too, I mean, you know.
You know, it's not gonna be a problem, why worry, you know, with that conflict?
You don't like it, speak up. I mean, I don't know, seems like a bad.
I didn't say I don't like it. I mean. Let them blow the town down. Michael, from a risk perspective, um, can you just, I, I just want to make sure they understand the risk that they're taking and just make sure the town is not taking on any risk by releasing them.
They asked for a foundation only, it was at their own risk, and they moved forward.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I just want to make sure.
Sure, so it, it is that same situation that happened with Global Foundries. And so if they, if I Park submits their plans and the plans are approved by the building department, they would be able to have a limited construction scope, and I think it was foundation and steel work. And if somehow it doesn't get approved here, um, they're sort of stuck. They, that was their, that's their cost, and they, they have no recourse.
But would we be forced to them to have to deconstruct what they've constructed?
Well, they gotta work out whatever the issue is, I mean, I would think, right?
Yeah.
What, what kind of issue could be so insurmountable that they can't overcome it?
Just let us get going. That would save us all a lot of worry, but.
And also too, it, they only run into a problem too if the board votes the project down. You know, it's, after the public hearing, right?
Or, or makes, makes this change that would affect whatever has already been.
True, that, that is true, right, so.
I don't anticipate that, I'm not saying there would be one, I'm just saying that's the risk. I don't think it's a huge risk, but I think.
So a hypothetical risk is DOT maybe kind of weighs in and says you got brand new traffic signaling. Okay, so what's the probability of that? Probably slim to none. I'm sure Joe feels very comfortable.
Still wouldn't change the site plan.
That's not gonna pop up based on past history, but, I mean, that's a legitimate risk, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't change the site plan.
Yeah, and I just, over, just overall, I think the public hearing is a good thing, because everyone gets to hear about this exciting thing that, Joe, I think you should actually, you, you should represent that, um, at the public, public hearing. So let's, um, if, um, board members, any further additional comments? No?
So, I'm just trying to count days, I'm sorry. If, if we wanted to have a public hearing for this in September or in August?
Or August, I would.
I don't see this as being, again, as large as the, the apartment complex.
Right.
We have the ability to do a, a second meeting in August, right? On the first Tuesday instead of the third Tuesday?
Yeah, that's.
Does that, does that give us the 25 days? I think it might, I'm just trying to count days right now.
So it would be the 11th rather than the 18th?
Trying to add 25 days to July 14th. Which apparently.
Do the math, come on.
Apparently, I, I should be able to do that much faster.
18th, so it's anytime after the 8th of August.
Yeah, it just makes it.
It is past steel day, I guess, right? So.
They have to get the, Scott, they have to get the foundation.
We already said we would have a public hearing on the 18th, right? So I don't think you want to have two public hearings on the same night anyway.
They still have a public hearing.
The first public hearing was the 4th.
Fourth?
It would be the 4th.
Okay.
The 4th, I don't think works, is it?
No, not for the 25 days, no.
Yeah, you gotta go 25 days from tonight, well, from whenever you notice.
The public, the public hearing that we just scheduled is Stewart's. So we could, we, so the question is, do you do two public hearings, Stewart's and this on the 18th? Or do you schedule two separate meetings, right?
You'd probably, you'd probably do the 11th.
They're gonna be two pretty much non-events.
Yeah, I, I would have.
Are you, I, I think you could probably do them both on the same night. You don't think you can? think you can?
I was, I was just saying you would potentially, if we put them on different nights, you would save a week. Um...
When's the Stewart? We could call it ice cream night.
It's the 18th.
Oh, 18.
I, I think it's global. I mean...
You know, you're gonna have a, an, an ice cream off here. I, I would...
I think Ronnie Brooks better qualify.
I'd be willing to judge that. I will judge that competition.
I think Stewart's would be, I mean, Ronnie Brooks on the...
Just a residence.
Two, two motions on the schedule.
That's pretty funny.
But do you think the public's gonna be that? Is there anything that could be controversial? I mean, I wonder why, I don't, I don't think the public...
I don't think it'd be controversial. I think it would be, they'd be embracing.
Yeah.
You know, it might be like a, you know, hey, this is what we're gonna be doing.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna do...
Actually, for your own protection, Joe.
Okay. So we're gonna do two, two motions here. Uh, the first one is, is really around the risk, um, is to, um, make a motion to, um, approve them moving forward with a demolition plan and, uh, foundation work, assuming that they, that you're aware that you're taking the risk to proceed.
What about the structural steel?
And, oh, and instruction of, um, and is just your erecting?
Still, still.
Instructional.
How would you say that for the building department?
Erection, instructional steel.
Okay. Erection of, um, instructional steel. So that's the motion before the board.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
At the applicant's risk.
At the applicant's risk. Okay. You heard the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 There's a delay down there, huh? Okay.
Takes a while for the sound to travel.
I was just teasing you, Richard.
It's echoing from the mass.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, board members. Um, and then, uh, second, set a public hearing for September eight, um...
August 18th.
Almost moved you to August 18th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need enough time to notice. So it can't be...
Well, thank you. Is it anticipated that the public hearing will be an in-person or will it be a Zoom?
We don't know.
We don't know.
We're unsure.
We're assuming it's gonna be in-person at this point in time, but we don't know for sure.
Hopefully in-person.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully in-person.
And maybe, Michelle, what we can do is set specific times so that we don't necessarily have everybody arriving for both public hearings at the same time.
Public hearing may be Zoom. For the board, this one was better in-person, but, but we did, we did wanna bring the board up to date on, you know, what's going on. And we do appreciate the support and thank you, Scott, for that accommodation. So, good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
See you guys in a little while.
Thank you.
So if you could just introduction and just tell us about the project. This is your first appearance before the board, so, uh, we're, we're excited to hear about it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Gallagher. I'm with Insight Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC. Uh, the application in front of you tonight is for Hope Well Senior Living, 672 New York State Route 82. The board may be familiar with the site. Um, there's been previous applications proposed for this property. Uh, in addition, this site, site plan was in front of you earlier this year as part of the proposed zoning text change, which was adopted by the town board in February of this year for a senior independent living apartment complexes. Uh, we're here as part of the next step for a site plan submission for a 90-unit senior independent living complex with market rate apartments, stormwater management facilities, utilities, and associated site amenities. Uh, the owner of the property, Anthony Sagretti, is here tonight. Um, he's been the owner for 15 years. Previous applications were submitted for this project and they were done by contract vendors. Uh, Anthony has recently completed an apartment complex in Wappingers and he is looking forward to reviewing this application with the board. As part of our team, uh, we also have, uh, Don Petracola, who's here tonight for L M V Architects, Mazor Consulting, and Ecological Syndalutions. As part of the submission, we provided initial reports and studies from this team for your initial review. If we want to look at the site plan application to orient ourselves, uh, north is the upper right-hand corner of the sheet. Uh, Route 82 is on the upper part of the sheet and there are two D E C regulated wetlands on either corner of the site. The project is served by two driveways. The driveway to the east is an exit-only, uh, right-hand turn driveway. Uh, the driveway to the west is the entrance to the facility and an exit lane which you can turn both right and left. Due to recent, uh, D E, D O T updated regulations and per the, uh, recommendations and analysis by our consulting engineers, the D O T is gonna mandate a left turn signal, I mean, a left turn lane, a left turn lane, um, into the property. And that's shown both on this site plan as well as with the Mazor Consulting, uh, report. Uh, there's approximately, there is 150 parking spaces on site. Um, 135 of those are to serve the units based on the town code calculations and there's 15 parking spaces allocated for visitor parking. Pedestrian circulation, there's a proposed sidewalk that, um, loops the entire facility for a walking path. Uh, the utilities, um, that are proposed as part of this project, uh, stormwater management is going to be conveyed through a series of catch basins that will go to three different stormwater management locations. There's two basins in the front of the property and then an underground infiltration system on the rear. So both of these and this. Uh, the water line is proposed to connect to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority Line, uh, crossing 82 and then traveling east. Uh, also, the sewer will connect to the Hamlet Sewer District via Trinkle Lane. That concludes my initial review of the project. Um, unless there are any questions by the board at this time, I would like to turn it over to L M V Architects who will review the architectural elevations.
Can you just quickly, I'm sorry, quickly give us the breakout? You said it's 90 units market rate, but you didn't break out like number of bedrooms or?
Uh, we can talk about that, um, with the architect.
Okay, and then, sorry, continue. Sorry. The left, the left turn lane in, is there enough space in that current roadway and the right-of-way? Or are you gonna take part of your property to be able to widen the road?
There will be an expansion of the road that we will go to D O T and they'll help regulate it. So it'll be expanded. The initial idea is it will be expanded slightly on either side. The existing Route 82.
Okay. And on either side, meaning there's residential across the street or where the other road comes out?
So there'll be an expansion to either side of the street.
Okay.
More detailed plans are included in the, the Traffic Engineers Report, and those will be developed as the project continues and conversations are had with the D O T directly.
Can I just add, is there enough right-of-way if you've looked at it or do you have to acquire right-of-way on the other side?
My understanding, I, I'm, I did not do the initial report, so I will have to check with Maz, Mazor, but my initial understanding is there is enough right-of-way, but I would have to get them to actually confirm that.
Fifteen parking places for visitors is gonna be enough if you got 90 apartments?
I think the calculation is 1.5 for 90 units. I, I believe to have 135 spaces for 90 units is going to be more than adequate. Um, so even though there's only 15 spaces allocated for visitors, I think there'll be plenty of parking for additional visitors.
Does that include the parking that's gonna be for the community space center? Is it gonna be that, that 15 spaces will go to that, um, use as well? Or is there gonna be separate parking for the house?
It would go to that use as well. My understanding is the community space is mostly serving the apartment complex.
Yes.
The community space is mostly serving already residents that are existing on-site for...
No, no, that's gonna be for the, uh, the town.
Okay, it is for, so yes, so the 15 spaces would be also allocated for.
And then, I'm sorry, one last question. When you say senior living, do you have an age range?
Have you?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Okay.
Fifty-five is the new senior?
I was gonna say.
I know, I know.
Good evening. My name is Don Petrancola with Liston McCormick Van Vors Architects. Uh, to address a couple of your questions, the, um, unit count is, um, 90 total units, uh, approximately 29 units per floor, three stories. Our mix is one and two-bedroom units at approximately 60/40 split, um, with, um, 60% two-bedrooms, 40% one-bedrooms. On a typical floor, we would have 17 two-bedrooms and 12 one-bedroom units. Average. So, the building is, um, essentially residential in nature. Uh, we are utilizing forms that are, you can drive a mile and we have direction on 82 here, here in the seams. We've got, uh, clavering siding, we've got a, a brick base, we've got white trim, uh, we've got three-sided bays that project out and those come off. We're sort of a cavity to this building. This building looks longer in our drawings, which is what it is. We straightened it out 'cause it's very difficult to draw straight out an elevation on that. So this is, this is, you know, strengthening the building out. This is the whole elevation. This is then the center, left side, right side. I'm trying to break that up so you can see it a little more clearly. This is the entry here. Uh, every unit will have a covered porch. Uh, three stories here to connect the bays in here. They'll have little gables over the units, uh, where they're not adjacent to bays. The roofing is going to be a shingle roof, but we mansar the majority of the units so that we can screen any mechanical units up on the roof. We don't have to put them on the ground around the building. Quite a large condenser farm that we had. So I think that'll work out well. Center of the building, we could probably do a full gable so we can get our larger air handlers there, uh, and help kind of pop that central, central space up. So, you know, it's, 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 it's not necessarily a distinctive Duchess County load, kind of Hudson Valley flair. Um, but, you know, people, even seniors, um, that this is, you know, the last unit that they're purchasing and living, moving into, they wanna go back home. So people, uh, wanna live in facilities that they're comfortable and they're familiar with. So that's what we're trying to do. And, um, with this, with this, we're trying to break up the scale of the terraces all and just kind of accentuating vertical components, you know, with the, with the bays. So I think, I think it'll work very well, work very well with the community and, uh, will be a positive addition.
You, you said purchase. Is it purchase or rent?
Rental.
Right, okay. Thank you. I heard purchase.
And it looks like there's a berm that's located in front of the building along 82. Some sort of...
A stormwater basin or a berm?
Are you talking about here?
Yeah.
That's a stormwater basin. So there is a stormwater basin. We are proposing landscaping along to help screen, uh, this portion of the property and part of the, part of this area would be slightly planted. But this is being opened to account for stormwater management and then we're screening other portions of the property.
So it's gonna be a depression?
It's gonna be a depress...
Like a depression pump?
Yes, yes, the stormwater basin is a depression.
And protected nothing other than landscaping?
So there's, there's a physical berm, um, to this area, uh, but no, there's not gonna be a fencing or guide grille or anything proposed at this time. There is a guide where, a small guide grille proposed between the parking, uh, but nothing on the roadside.
It's not on the ground, it's not actually wet all the time.
Correct. It's not wet all the time. It's a stormwater basin. As water, you know, gets conveyed to it during storms, from the, from the service on-site, it'll go to a certain elevation and then drain within 24 hours.
Yeah, I would just think you'd have some level of protection since it's right off the roadway.
We can look into that as an option, absolutely.
Yeah. What are you doing with the house on-site?
The existing dwelling on-site is going to be refurbished into a community center.
Nice. Uh, any pedestrian walkway from, so if a resident wants to go out, I mean, you have a walkway with, within, but, um, to connect...
There's only internal walkways, uh, proposed at this time.
You did receive a, a special permit from the town board?
We are here tonight for an application for a special permit for senior independent living complexes.
They submitted, um, they submitted and they got the zoning approved. They asked for, uh, the zoning to be approved to allow them to apply for this special permit. Like, this is February, right?
February it was adopted.
Can you, um, describe what this is and...
Uh, that is in support of the sewer. On the rating and utilities plan, you can see it a little better. It's the proposed, um, there's a water heater pit that's underground. There is a proposed sewer pump station that will be fenced in and then there's a, a route access to that area.
So how, um, high off the ground will it appear?
There'll be a couple manholes that'll be around. We'll fence the whole thing. It'll be at six foot tall and you won't be able to see anything further past that.
I know you said there's a walking trail, what, and there's gonna be a community center. Are there any other outdoor amenities on-site? Grill areas, patio areas?
There's a patio space in the rear and then in the interior, there's also a, and other amenities for the guest. But from an exterior perspective, there is an additional patio area in the rear.
Okay, and you said some of the apartments will have balconies or patios only on the first floor? Are there balconies on the...
It's on every floor. Every unit will have a covered, uh, deck.
Covered, okay. So it wouldn't be a grilling area?
No.
Okay. Does a senior complex like this allow children?
No.
No.
Someone who's 55 could have school-aged children. So they wouldn't be eligible?
Well, it's 55 and older, it's, uh, would be allowed. Could be allowed to visit, but not to live there.
Okay.
When you say 55, so if one spouse is 55 and the other one is 54, or 34, says the case mark.
At least you didn't say 24.
Yeah. Because just one spouse has to be 54 or they both have to be.
I believe just one has to be 55.
That's why I'm asking about kids, 'cause...
Well, the 34...
Wouldn't be unusual to be 55 and have kids that are school-aged.
Sure, of course.
You're saying it's a stipulation that there's no kids?
They have no kids.
So the planning board will wanna take, um, lead ages here. I'm not sure if we feel like the plans are ready at this point to circulate or not. That's the pleasure of the board. That, um, but we do wanna...
So you have been before...
Do we have comment letters or anything from...
No, but I'm, what I'm saying is if we think that the plans are ready, we can, I mean, if we don't, if we don't think they're gonna chan, change substantially between now and we could probably circulate or declare our intent to circulate.
I, I don't know whether our engineer or you or traffic would have any comment letters or anything that might change the plan. Are we saying we've already done that review?
No, not necessarily. It's just a question.
We've got preliminary comments from, uh, CPL, nothing from HVA. And I mean, the state's gonna weigh in as far as the D O T grant.
I, I mean, this, I, I'm familiar with the site because of the, um, previous applications.
I know, I know. But, but everyone has a slightly different layout, it's got a different number of use, different parking. I mean, if you, if you think this, because the site circulation looks very different than the last time we saw this, right? The last time, I think it was a center drive and it had, it had wings on either side.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I think, have you been before the ARB?
No, the, um, the plans have been submitted to the ARB at this point, but they have not been before, they have not had a chance to review them yet.
So, you know, if, if, board members, if you're in agreement, I think we need another review of this and get the professionals to, to weigh in and give you some additions, some technical feedback as well, and then we'll.
Put them up for another discussion.
Yep.
Michelle, I think, I mean, if we've got landscaping plans, if we've got lighting plans, if we've got the traffic circulation and we don't think we need a traffic study or anything here, we don't, I mean, I don't, I heard there's no sidewalks, there's other things that normally with a complex of this type, I would think would be there, so I want to make sure we've got.
And we submitted to the Dutchess County for their comments as well, right, yeah? So we still, we still waiting for their comments as well.
Okay.
So we got two public hearings next month, can we get them in for discussion only?
Yeah, I think so.
So that'd be three, three. Okay. So any, any additional?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the permit itself, does it have any minimum requirements?
Yes, there's conditions and then the permit.
So do we know if the way this site plan is laid out, it meets all those minimum conditions?
Yes, I believe it does, yes.
Okay, I, I just don't remember, I'm, I'm going to have to read up on it.
Conditions like being on a state or county road, municipal water and sewer, minimum eight, minimum eight.
I was thinking more like access to public transportation, sidewalks to somewhere or, you know, minimum, maximum building height sort of thing, like, I don't know whether this meets all those.
Not sure about building height, but I know sidewalks aren't a problem.
The density, there's a density requirement.
Yep, and if you look on SP one, there's a bulk zoning table, calculations for density, things of that nature, and the required areas are all in comparison to the special use permit as compared to the zoning.
Okay.
One thing, just keep in mind, like, I'm not familiar with this type of thing, but like your snow area, you know, where do you put your snow? If you don't want to tie up parking spaces, being in that, you're already tight on spaces with snow, so you should give some consideration where your snow go.
That's something we can identify on the plans.
Do we, are there, do you have your refuse area on the plan as well?
Correct, it's on.
Clear.
Where are the property?
Okay. Long walk for some people. Okay.
Any, any others?
You don't have it on both sides of the building, just the one?
Correct, just on the one corner.
So is it, they're all accessible from the interior, is it just like a center elevator and then hallways, or are there elevators?
Yes, I think it's a center hallway, but, you know, all amenities, lobby, in the middle.
Okay.
But you have staircases on both ends, I imagine?
Yes, yeah, actually, the building is longer, I believe, that's three stairs, so we want in the middle, two on the others.
But just center elevators?
Right, they'll, two elevators in the middle.
Okay.
There's also a pool and a, a pool table.
Indoor pool?
In them.
Correct, I was going to say, because I'm not seeing a pool, okay. Okay. I hope there's a popcorn machine in the movie theater.
Our past proposal had some kind of like little deli or something or coffee shop, you have that as well or not?
Do we know what the, like, average rents are expected to be?
I do not believe we know what the average rents are going to be.
Yeah, we don't yet, we gotta put that together depending on, you know, what it was and go taxes. But I'll, I'll have that to you shortly.
Hey, anything else for the applicant? Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing you on August eighteenth.
Excellent, thank you so much for your time.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
It is. I think they took our easel.
Oh, I thought it was.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right. Good call.
Can he bring it back?
Jackie has it.
What's that?
The easel.
Yeah. Okay. Lot line realignment for Fashetta and Beau. There is an existing non-conforming fence that was actually granted approval for side yard setback, and I think you guys have record of that. The certificate of compliance, there's a barn and a deck and a chimney and a fireplace that have all been granted a certificate of compliance. Lot one is going from five point zero acres to eleven point three acres, and lot two will then go from seven point five to one point one. There is a, there's a pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback, but that won't be affected by the modification of the lot line, so it's not becoming any more non-conforming. Is there going to be any ability to further subdivide the eleven acre lot? I don't think so, that's the pole.
Yeah, because they have to flag lot currently right now, Laura.
Yeah, doesn't have the frontage.
It's hard to see this.
That's why I'm asking.
So I don't believe there's any other frontage except for this piece here.
So even if it's not wide enough to make it a road versus a flag lot? It's. If it's fifty feet. It's fifty feet. Wide enough to make it a road, right? Environmental constraints, though, right, for those?
I think there's wetlands in the back, right?
Yeah, a pond.
The wetland, I'm trying to see that.
So this is eleven, nine, split lane, and a pond, so, I don't know, they're going to be available in the future.
The applicant has no intention right now of sub, further subdividing? No. Okay. So there's no construction proposed or anything at this time, it's just a modification of the lot line?
Okay. It is pretty straightforward on this one, but it does have to go to a public hearing.
I wasn't even going to ask.
But, and I, I, I think this is, this should, this is pretty straightforward, so we'll set, set, Ms. Jason.
There's four of us, we can do it.
Okay, you can do it. Have a motion to set a public hearing for the lot, lot realignment for Sept, I keep trying to make things in September, August eighteenth.
It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly.
The recommendation that all of these, I, I don't think they'll be highly attended, but all of them have a specific time if we can, so that we can stagger folks arriving.
So, so, no, just so, we'll set a time, so that, that way you don't have to, you're not sitting around waiting, so try to.
So that should be in the notice then?
Yeah, it'll have to be in the notice, we'll have to talk about that, once you call me tomorrow and we'll.
Okay, I just need the exact language so that.
Figure that out.
I would propose that this one and the next lot line adjustment go towards the beginning, because I think they're very straightforward and you'll probably hardly, anyone show up.
They're very quick, yeah, get a breathing out.
I think my others should probably go towards the beginning also.
Try to put you in a row.
Yeah, no, just space me out through the meeting so I have all night here with you.
Okay, so the, the, the motion has been properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, we're all set for the public hearing.
Have a good night.
You're not coming back?
No, although I might want to help them. Should I help them?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I don't know anything about the project, though. All right, so I'll have, we'll be in touch tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
You too. Shouldn't really stay out?
Just bring them in and.
How can you go about that?
You're helping, you need help?
Oh, that's okay, thank you, sure. Yeah, thank you.
I wanted to say, Laura. Good night.
I don't know if you have a map of the property, did they, did they give you a map of it?
Yes, it's a box.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, the reason we're here tonight, my neighbor came to me and said, I'd like to buy some of your land because he wanted a view of the valley, and I said, I sell him some of the land for the view of the valley, and that's what we did, and, and so that's why we're here tonight. I think, as far as I know, everything conforms to the zoning i- in the town, so, and, so I don't know what you want, if you ask me any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
Laurie, you want to add?
You're Mr. Warren.
Yes, I'm Lou Warren.
Mr. Warren's lot is, is this lot here, and he's conveying this section here to this lot here, which is standing, right?
Right up there, you mean, on, on, yeah, yeah, it's there, right.
So then this lot will, will.
The one, the one on, on the right, that one you're circling, that's it.
Yep.
And this hall, right, this one here is, the one behind me, is this one here, if you wanted a view of the valley, this goes south across the valley.
That's, that's the home, that's his home.
Yeah, this is his home right here.
Michelle, what's the zoning here?
This is R one.
R one. Is there any intent right now to build additional homes or further subdivide?
No, they're not going to build on, you can't, because I own on one side, the gravel bank is on the other side, and he, and just, so there's not, not going to build anything on the property. If you look at the property, it's not buildable, but he wanted it for the view of the valley.
Board members, any other, any questions on this? So it's required to go to a public hearing?
Yeah.
So we'll set that for August eighteenth.
Okay.
Sorry, because I've been moving everything to September, but.
Okay.
So, board members have a motion to set the public hearing for August eighteenth for this, this lot, lot line realignment.
Is there anything we have to do for this?
Yes, you'll have to send out, you'll have to sign your property and you'll also have to send out public hearing notices, so you should just call the planning office tomorrow and we'll give you the.
Okay, okay.
You just need to call the planning office.
Yeah, okay.
And that's for Jackie.
It's for Jackie, okay.
It's Jackie, right there. Okay, it's been moved and properly second, all in.
Just add the same thing to this as we did before, that we should be very specific about the times for each of these.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, it's been.
Nobody's seconded.
I thought I seconded.
Oh, did you?
I seconded, yep, sorry.
We got, we got a caller.
If I didn't, I do now.
It's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you.
We're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good night, gentlemen.
That was the last item on the agenda tonight, if there's any other items that need to, items want to be brought up, discussed, sure?
It's nice to be in person again.
Yeah, it's good to see everyone.
Sure is.
I guess, I'm thinking maybe we'll send out some sort of poll, like, for the September meetings, so, I wonder if people are available, see if we can.
Yeah, Michelle.
We'll have to think about that a little bit, so I'm, I'm sorry that I can't give you more information right now, but we'll think about that and maybe I'll send out sort of doodle polls, if people choose dates when they're available and see what you can work for everybody.
But you're saying you think we have three coming, so then in addition to the four public hearings here, we've got at least two other things on the agenda in August that would.
I know there's been a request that we received today for, they want to, immediately want to come in for subdivision review of some of the woods, so that's going to be a big public hearing, so we have to still have the, the subdivision, the, your public hearing on the subdivision, but, and then.
But don't we have to schedule that? So are you saying we would schedule that in August for a date in September? Okay.
Right.
All right.
And then, I know that, obviously, Stone Ridge Commons is wanting to go to public hearing, and I suspect that by September, we'll, we'll be wanting the Joe's Mothers Road project, the Hope Us Near Living, will also probably want, hopefully we can, they, they can move to October, because they might be a little behind, but, but those are three very large projects.
I mean, for these larger ones in these times, whatever we have to do to, to have the right distancing and everything, that's fine, if it's more meetings, small, or spread out.
Yeah, double up on September.
Yeah, like ketchup.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I'm all right with it.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the meeting, the planning board meeting?
Second.
Moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a great evening.